I'm here, I'm Anne Need, I'm the Director of Family, School, Community Partnerships. And so this is an important part of the work that we're doing is wanting to talk more with students and families about their feelings, their thoughts, fears, anything that you want to tell us about coming back to school in September. So I'm gonna let Dr. Walsh, or Mr. Walsh do a little bit of a welcome to, and then we'll jump into having you raise your hand, tell us a little bit about what school you're in and what grade and your thoughts. So, Mr. Walsh.
So, good afternoon, everyone. Great to see so many students on the line and their proud parents by their side. And where we can't see students, we can see parents, so happy to see so much involvement this afternoon. So one, you guys might be aware, students, you might be aware, number one, I hope the last three, four months away from the school buildings finds you and your family well. We are trying to prepare our schools so all of you can come back to a school building that is safe, safe for your teachers, safe for our staff, safe, and most importantly, safe for you. The governor, if you hear some noise in the background, that's my dog who decided to start drinking water right now as I'm talking to you. So I apologize. So, the governor released guidelines for back to, for safe back-to-school guidelines on Monday. The district, meaning Danbury Public Schools, we are wrestling with those recommendations and trying to figure out how we can safely get you back into school, how we can safely get back, get your teachers back into school, and even our parents who drop you off and pick you up, make sure we have appropriate protocols in place for safe dismissal and safe arrival on a daily basis. Some of the questions that have come up from your teachers in our earlier morning session is you guys are probably aware of the social distancing rules and wearing a mask. And so a lot of questions have been raised about how are we gonna handle kids walking down the hall? What are we gonna do about sharing materials in the classroom? Is this gonna be safe for my kids? So the teachers have expressed a lot of concerns about your safety, and we want to make sure we come up with protocols, safety protocols, to make sure you're safe and everyone in the building is safe. So today is very important for us, as we've gotten feedback from our parents, as we've gotten feedback from our staff. We want to make sure we get feedback from you to kind of think, to learn about what you feel like your priorities are to make sure we have a safe school reentry in the fall. So Dr. Anne Need has put together a really good process to help elicit your feedback. And Anne, I will get out the way so you can get us ready, and hopefully by this hour, I will say a couple of closing thoughts when we end.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, and we appreciate it. So, let's go. So, everybody knows how to use the raise the hand feature, so we've got some good stuff going on. So our first person we want to hear from is Zach.
So, what, if we're going to be eating in the cafeteria, why would, how are we going to eat in the cafeteria?
And I know on these, we normally don't give some feedback, but I think to relay any fears or to calm any fears down, I'm gonna ask Mr. Walsh if he'd like to just respond in a sentence or two to some of these.
Sure, sure. Hi, Zach. So Zach, we are, number one, we don't have all the answers. Let me just say to you and everyone on this call, and the answers that I might provide might change by the time we open up school. But right now, our initial plan, particularly at elementary school, the thought, particularly at elementary school and middle school, the thought is, is that we would have students eating in their classrooms. And part of what we need to figure out is if we are eating in classrooms, how are we gonna get food safely to your classroom? Who's gonna be available for supervision so that staff can also have an opportunity to eat lunch themselves? Or will we be asking teachers to eat lunch with you? So those are some of the things we're trying to figure out. But right now, the thought is, if we're not gonna all congregate in the cafeteria together, we would bring food to you. That's a great question, Zach.
Great, thank you, Zach. Amanda, Pascarella, please, Pascarella.
So, some of my concerns is, I have a friend who has kids going to like elementary school, middle school, and high school. Um, so when they all, so when they all come home and the parents are at work, what are they going to, like, all the germs they bring in?
So, so Anne, I just wrote, Amanda, is it possible you can include your question in the chat box? Because I couldn't understand you at all. She was kind of going in and out on my side. I don't know if anyone else heard you, so they can...
Yeah, I think there's a connection issue.
Okay.
Can you hear him now?
I can hear you, but it's very blurry. It's not a good connection.
Okay, we'll put it in the chat.
You put it in the chat? Okay. Amanda, thank you so much. So how about while you write that one, and we'll go to the next question, and then I'll come back and answer your question. Is that okay?
Of course, thank you.
Okay, thank, oh, now we can hear you.
Should I chat? Should he try again?
Yeah.
I have one more text. So, my friend has kids going to elementary school, middle school, and high school. And the parents go to work, when they come home, there are a lot of germs there, too.
Okay, you know what, we're not, we're not...
We're gonna test your writing skills. Please put it in, please put your question in the chat.
Absolutely.
And I'll, and I'll, and we'll circle right back to you.
Great. We'll go on to Gabrielli.
And we'll come back to Amanda.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanna ask a question, like, is there any possibilities that we're gonna have, like, open school this year and have a full day year-round?
Hi, Gabrielli. Would you mind me asking what level you're at, elementary, middle, or high school?
I just finished middle school, I'm going to high school.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
So I, you must, you must be anxiously awaiting a response to that question. So, Gabrielli, at the moment, the plan is, the governor has requested that we all go back to school in the fall. But, but, but the expectation is we're supposed to go back to school in the fall, and it's supposed to be done safely. Part of, you know, and, and those expectations are that we're going to be appropriately socially distanced, that we can keep everyone safe, and we're trying to make sure that we can do that for you, for all of your friends, for all of our teachers, and for all of our administrators in the district. And so the answer to your question, the quick, simple answer to your question is yes. The expectation is, we will open up schools in the fall, and, you know, short of a resurgence, we will continue to remain in school throughout the school year. But it is a strong possibility that we might have some modifications to what school will look like again in the fall, whether that's full distance learning...
I get that, but are we going to school the whole week? Or is it gonna be some days you go to school, some days we stay home?
Yeah, I, I, no, I understand. And so we're still trying to figure that out. And, and part of this feedback, this feedback opportunity is to get, to get a full understanding from our community, meaning you, what you feel like is the best, the safest way to reenter our schools. So do you have a feeling, so, so the answer to your question is, Gabrielli, we haven't made that decision yet, but the governor right now expects us to all be back in school in September. There may be some modifications to that, but as of right now, and, and you know, we can, we can certainly advocate for something different, but right now, the expectation is all, all kids are back in school with masks in September and socially distanced to the best extent possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm sorry I couldn't give you something more, you know, like definitive, right, right? But it's, it's really a moving target right now.
I get it, I get it.
Thank you, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
Right, so we have a lot of hands up, so I think what I'm gonna do at this point is, I know you all want to hear from Mr. Walsh, some feedback to your questions. We will make sure that we, first of all, we are recording this, and we will publish something down the road more definitively to answer your questions. But I think at this point, we just want to hear from everyone. So if we can start off with Jennifer Grant, please. Hi.
I'm a student at Danbury High School, and I've, last year, the halls were really, really crowded, and it was really hard to get to class in general, but I'm really like worried as of now with going back to school, how it's gonna be handled, because I could barely get anywhere. And I know that now with the whole COVID-19 thing, it'll be even worse, having everybody so condensed into one given area, so I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, Jennifer, that's a great wondering, because we, we share the same wondering. We had a great meeting with administrators this morning, and as, and they echoed the same sentiments. We had, we had teachers in middle school and the high school who also expressed concern about, about, you know, congregation of students in the hallway, and how are we going to safely be able to move students around the building, given how, given how crowded we are. And, and, and this is why we have, this is why we raise concerns about, you know, the reentry. And so we're hoping that there's an opportunity for some modifications to the plan, but we don't know, we don't know fully yet. But right now, we're certainly, you know, planning on a full reentry and coming up with protocols that, that, within reason, Jennifer, to keep everyone safe. And so one of the things that we talked about is having staircases that are one-way, hallways that, you know, follow typical, you know, street traffic patterns, so everyone's on the right-hand side of the hallway, if you can envision what that would look like, to try to, try to mitigate the risk of exchange of, you know, germs while kids are passing in the hallway. And then, of course, the expectation is students will, will be wearing their masks. But, but we do, we fully understand your concern, and we're trying to come up with options so that we don't have so many students in the school at once, particularly the high school.
Great, thank you. And we'll move to Shay Moore, please.
Hi, I'm a student at Rogers Park, and for transportation, there are many students that don't have an option for going, for having a parent guide them to school. What are we gonna be able to do for, on a bus, when they're already overflowing? And I don't believe anyone will be paying for more buses. How would you sort out?
Yeah. Hi Shay, thank you for that question. And so you guys are not making the questions any easier for us, I'll tell you that right now. Honestly Shay, we don't have an answer to that question. Certain, part of, part of what we plan to do is to survey our, our families to get a feel of what, what families will be taking advantage of, of our school busing and what will not. And then, and then with that information, we can kind of determine how much, reasonably how much social distancing we can do on our buses. We had a survey pushed out to our community earlier, and we got this sense from our parents that many of them would be driving their, their children to school, but to your point, not everyone. And so we will, you know, our thoughts were we would come back and have another survey that's a little more definitive. This is exactly what school will look like in the fall, once we have those details in place. And then, and then, you know, and then poll our, our families and ask, you know, do you plan to send your child to school? Do you plan to send your child to school on the bus? Will you be picking your, your child up from the bus every day? And then begin to use that information to determine how we're going to socially distance, if we can safely do it, and then what additional resources we might need.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, Shay.
Thank you. And I love the talk that's going on in the chat box. So if parents have a comment or want to add more, please feel free to, because it's great to hear from lots of different folks. And so Griffin, please.
Hi, so I'm a rising senior at Danbury High School, and I'm going to preface this by saying that I understand that you may not have answers to as many things as we would all like, but I think we all appreciate that the efforts that you are taking to make the return to school as safe as possible. One caveat to that is, I think that having read the budget for this upcoming year and understanding how high school children work, there is no way that enforcing social distancing or mask-wearing is going to be effective in any capacity on buses. And I think that in order to alleviate that, something needs to be done to reduce capacity on buses, because as it is, we can only, in order to keep people six feet apart, you can only have like 10 people on a bus, and we do not have money for enough buses. So I think something along the lines of staggering who goes to school on what days, as much as that might not be fun for us, it would help keep down people in the hallways, people on buses, in classrooms. And I think that if we don't do that, that the amount of people that aren't able to be driven to school or drive to school is going to be completely overwhelming. And also, yeah, that's a good point, Jennifer. The amount of people that will just outright refuse to wear a mask is going to be a problem, whether we want it to be or not.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Mateus, please.
Hi, I'm a student at Danbury Public School.
Mateus, can you move closer to your mic?
I want to know how we're going to do that in...
Mateus, we're not able to understand you. Can you put your thoughts in the chat box?
I'm going to zoom with the bus.
Mateus, Mateus, we're not understanding you. Mateus, we're not understanding you. Can you put your message in the chat box for us, please? Thank you. And we're gonna move on to Lauren, our cherry, please.
Hi, I know this is probably low on the list of things, but both of my kids do marching band in the fall. Are we looking at what we are going to do as far as after-school activities? Or are we shelving that and just really concentrating on what we're gonna do in the classrooms?
Hi, Lauren. So we, we did receive guidance from the state around extracurricular activities, and I'll just speak to two. You know, one of them being extracurricular activities, you know, meaning C I A C, released some information about sports and after-school sporting, so that's one. And then the other one is, and so for example, band, instruments, orchestra, they have released some guidance on, on those content areas and also performances, and spoke to, you know, the fact that those things can be done, but with increased, increased social distancing. So for example, if it's orchestra, you know, string instruments, et cetera, orchestra singing, instead of being six feet apart, it will need to be extended to 12 feet apart. They encouraged us to, you know, take advantage of football fields and really large spaces that can accommodate, you know, large-sized groups of, you know, 35 to 50 students, because oftentimes we know how big those groups can be. And they also encouraged us to have, you know, smaller, smaller group sizes for training and, you know, practicing, and then bring the bigger groups together only when necessary. So there is some initial guidance on making that happen. The expectation is, if we're gonna open up school fully in the fall, that all the extracurricular activities will also be part of the school experience.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And, and of course, that doesn't make it easy to make, implement, but the expectation is that we would if we're opening up fully.
Great.
Thank you for asking that question, because I know a lot of families and students are probably wondering.
I'm just gonna turn my camera to the one sitting next to me, so she can give you her thoughts, and then we'll keep moving on.
I think that, like, in classrooms, there should be like, only like three people, like, for the blocks, I think there should only be three people at a time doing it, and on the buses, only 20 people.
Thank you. And Anne, what's that, what's, what's that young lady's name?
Riley.
Okay, so Riley, we're gonna get you on this shared Google Doc, so you can help me with this plan, please.
Good, great. She was also concerned about children's masks getting snapped by other children, so that was last night. So let's hear her.
And so Anne, can I, can I speak to the mask? Because for those students who are on, the, the, the district is expecting to have an extra available mask for students in, in those cases, anticipating that those things can happen. And so, you know, the, the state expectation is anytime we enter a building, everyone would have a mask on anyway. But we also understand that, you know, masks will break, you know, students might lose their mask, and, you know, whatever might happen. And so we want to, we will, we will definitely have additional masks available for kids throughout the school day, and staff as well.
Great. Okay, and we'll go to Zach, please.
What about switching masks and kids with asthma?
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so Zach, I'm sorry, is your question, students with asthma, making sure they have a mask that is, make sure that they're wearing a mask that protects them?
What I'm asking is, since wearing a mask for a prolonged period can bother kids' asthma and inhibit their breathing so much that they will have an asthma attack sometimes, what are we gonna do about that? And also, three, about after every three hours, reusable masks and other masks will need to be switched.
So what, what we have talked about extensively, and whether this be for students or for staff, but students specifically, is making sure we've identified all of our students that have compromised immune systems in any way. And so students that who cut, who have, you know, asthma, who have, you know, other conditions that could be compromising this, you know, going back to school, to make sure we have some type of consultation with our school nurse and the students and their family to walk them through, you know, the expectations when we go back to school. So Zach, that, that was a great question. I appreciate you asking. You're muted, Anne.
I am, thank you. Is Tricia Robinson, please? Trish? Trisha? There you are.
Hello, I was wondering how are we gonna manage the cafeteria? Because in middle school, you get a lunch break, and there's a lot, a lot of people in the cafeteria. So how exactly, and you have to take your mask off to eat. So how exactly are we gonna space out everybody in the cafeteria? Are we gonna eat in our classes?
Right, and I'm sorry, can you repeat your name again? I, you've been ending up for me.
My name's Kieran Serry.
Mr. Walsh, can I, am I coming through now? I'm having technical problems.
Sure, sure.
Am I coming through?
Yes.
Oh, great, great, thanks. Go ahead, no answer. It is a problem we're all thinking about, about eating in the cafeteria and trying to have been spaced out. We're trying to work that through. Obviously, you can't use a mask while you're doing it, so we'd have to work through some way of getting the lunches to folk, get them to you so that you can eat them while you're spaced out. That's something that's concerning to us, so thank you for the question.
Great, glad to see you're with us, Dr. Sal, wonderful.
Oh, I've been in and out, in and out.
Okay, all right, great. We'll go to Havie Air, please.
Hello, I go to Westside, and my sister goes to D H S. And in the bathrooms, we need soap, hot water, and individual paper towels. At our schools, we run out pretty quickly, because either it's because of the amount of people that go to bathrooms or people doing, pretending to be funny and just wasting them. So how will these, how will these be provided?
Yeah. Zach, you want me to take that?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
So Xavier, some of the things that we've talked about is increased cleaning and disinfecting protocols throughout the day. So that is definitely something that we're looking at. We understand it's an absolute priority for our buildings, because we're going to be encouraging students and staff to be disinfected on a daily, you know, on an ongoing basis throughout the school day. And so we will have disinfectant materials in our classrooms and in common spaces throughout the school. But we also recognize that there's going to be a need to make sure that our, our, our bath, our restrooms are adequately stocked. And so that, that will definitely be a priority for us. Some of the questions that were raised earlier throughout the day as well was, will we have, you know, increased or additional custodial staff throughout the school day, recognizing that they can't, you know, be everywhere at the same time, whether that's, you know, making sure bathrooms are clean, you know, have ongoing cleaning, making sure we're wiping commonly-used spaces, you know, like doorknobs and when folks first enter the building. And so we, we have an eye on that and beginning to think that through of what that's gonna look like and the impact it's gonna have on the budget. But we are mindful that that's, that needs to be a priority for us, because we're certainly gonna be encouraging everyone to keep their hands, hands clean throughout the day.
I have a few more questions. Should I wait again, or should I say them now?
Go ahead, go ahead and ask them.
Okay, thank you. How frequently are the bathrooms going to be cleaned?
Again, as Mr. Walsh just said, we're gonna have to have a more rigorous routine to doing that. Can't answer that right now. Probably more often than, than, than we could anticipate, depending on the usage, but we'd have to keep a close eye on them, have added staff, and keep them as clean as possible. That's what we'd have to do, and, and monitor it daily. Some days are probably more than others, you know, it depends, but it's a high priority for us to make sure that they stay clean.
And who will enforce that the masks stay on?
Well, how, how old are you?
Twelve.
Well, help me out. You know, I, I could see where it's gonna be difficult. We're gonna have to cooperate. The adults are gonna have to cooperate. This is very unusual. So, you know, we don't, we don't have a police state. This is for medical reasons and health reasons. I think most students will just follow. Someone's having some real challenges with it, so we'd have some timeout areas so that they could take the mask off. We have to be reasonable. I don't want, we don't want our kids to start being put out of school and all that stuff because they won't wear a mask. We're looking for cooperation. So part of it is that we're gonna have to ask parents to help us work with their youngsters, tell them how important it is. And then when, when something happens at school, and it will happen, that we work with that person so it gets back on reasonably. So we work together as a team.
Okay, um, open, never mind.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Xavier, thanks for saving your hard questions for my boss. I appreciate that.
That's wonderful. Xavier, also put your thoughts in the chat box, too, because we're getting some good conversation in there as well.
I've heard before, but I just couldn't, I couldn't get the audio to work, and I kept knocking it, but I did hear some of it.
Okay.
Some good questions.
Yeah. Alberta, please.
Hi.
Hello.
Yes, I'm a student at D H S. I'm gonna be a senior this upcoming year. So I just wanted to ask if, like, if we will be able to, like, as you said, like, we have to wear masks in school. So will you guys provide them for us, or we will be providing them for ourselves? Because at this time, it's very difficult for everybody to get masks. And as if you see in the, like, in, in Amazon or like some other places, they're really, really, like, really expensive. So will you guys be able to provide them for us, or we have to provide them for ourselves?
Well, right now, we're still talking about it. We'll probably have, obviously, we'll have the, some masks available for those that during the day that, 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 folks that don't have them. And then we'll work with families if we need to purchase some, so right now, we're working through that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
And we'd like to hear Kira McCarthy next.
Hi, I was just wondering, again, how the hallways are going to work? Like, do you think it's a possibility that they'll, like, send one section of the school out in the hallways at a time?
Turn it on, yeah.
Like, at the high school, rather than have everyone, like, all 3,000 kids at the hallway at the same time? Because, like, it's very, like, pushy in the hallways.
Dr. Sal, were you gonna respond to that? Dr. Sal, were you gonna respond to that?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, Kara, that, that, that's a great question. Um, the, the, the high, did you say you're at the high school now?
Yeah, I'm gonna be a junior.
Okay, um, well, it would have been easier if you were K five. I could have been, to answer that question. But I, I, I'll try to answer that question for K five, six, eight, and nine twelve. Um, but specifically for nine twelve at Danbury High School, um, your principal, you know, school administrators and us, we're all trying to, to think through the, the, the safest way, the best way to keep all of you guys safe. Um, and, 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 and that could mean a number of different things from different ways on how you guys are gonna, different times of how you're gonna enter, different days on how you're gonna enter school, um, different times on how you're gonna be released from classrooms. Um, and, and so we're still exploring all of those things. Um, and so we don't, we don't have anything definitive for you right now. Um, at K five and six eight, particularly K five, one of the, you know, some of the things we talked about in terms of hallway movement is, is following the normal traffic patterns, um, that we typically would have. Um, and, and, you know, keeping, keeping our students socially distanced. Uh, you should know that your teachers are asking the same, um, important questions. The, the administrators are asking the same questions. And, and the superintendent, um, Dr. Pascarella has been pushing us to think through a plan um, to answer that very question, you know, how are we going to mitigate, mitigate the risk in our hallways? How are we gonna mitigate the risk, um, in our hall, you know, going to the cafeteria? Um, how are we gonna mitigate the risk, you know, when, when, when classes release? And where kids are getting off the buses and coming into building all congregated? Um, and we're still trying to figure those things out. Um, and, and, and again, and trying to see if there's any flexibility on how we enter school, um, in the fall. Uh, so we're still thinking through those things, um, and we're still reaching back out to the state to see if there's any flexibility on how we answer.
Uh, okay, I just have one more quick question. So do you think it's like, it's probably gonna be like, I don't know how to say this, um, so we're probably gonna just, like, leave the classroom doors, like, open at all times and unlocked so we avoid, like, touching doorknobs and everything?
We're working with the health department and for all of that, we wanna, fresh air is good leaving windows open. We don't expect a lot of movement in the hallway, so I would hope things like that can work out. I think what's gonna happen, even when we get back, we're just gonna have to try some of these things that work best for us. We don't have air conditioning, as you guys know, in all the areas, but, so we have the windows open, it's gonna be healthy, doors passing through. So we're gonna have to play that through, all of those things. Um, as I said before, we're all gonna be, this is gonna be very unusual, very different for all of us. Um, and it's gonna take some time to figure this out. We'll try to do what's right. And that's why we had this call today, keep these things in mind. So as we do some of this, we, um, we, we plan that way as best we can. So, ensure we'll keep them open as we can for a lot of reasons. One is the ventilation.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good question, Kara. Thank you.
And let's hear from Scott G. next.
Uh, so I'm also a student at DHS. Um, and like, I mean, after listening to, like, a lot of things people are saying, like, there's clearly many concerns, like, you know, with going back to school and everything. So I think distance learning's definitely gonna play a part, whether it's, like, fully distance learning or some sort of hybrid. Um, so as far as distance learning's going, like, this year, or, well, I guess last year, um, we went into the school, or we went into distance learning already having, like, relationships and stuff with our teachers. They already knew how to teach us for the most part, right? Like, like, things were pretty much down-packed for the most part. It was the end of the year. Um, y- you know, if we go, like, right into distance learning this year, or we don't, you know, see teachers a lot, like, how is that gonna work? Is the distance learning gonna be like it was this year, where they just assign us work? Or is it gonna be like some sort of, I don't, I mean, I don't know if it has to be Zoom, but like some sort of something like that, like Zoom meetings, where it's essentially like in normal school day, just at home, if that makes sense?
Right now, the state is putting a platform together to, to make it a better system across the state. Everybody felt the way you did, um, and, uh, it, it has to be enhanced. I'm hoping more synchronous work where you're actually doing some things. So those are all improvements that are gonna have to happen as best we can. Yeah, so now the assignment of a teacher is an interesting question, depending on how we start, you know? Um, you know, it's just like we had credit recovery, folks go on the computer, there's no relationship with a teacher. That is not what we want. So we have to work that through. But it should be a better system and the state is talking to us about having a different system. And we need to see what that'll look like.
Thank you.
I got you.
If we could have everyone, um, mute their mic while other people are talking, that'll stop some of the background noise. And we'd like to hear from Minnie next. Minnie, are you there with us? Or your son? Minnie, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, um, good afternoon. Um, so, um, this question is from Cyrus, who is a, who's a Broadview student, um, next year. And, um, the question, um, just a minute, he just texted me the question. The question was, um, we're trying to, are you trying to limit student interaction beyond the classroom? It was one of my questions also. So, oh, what, along the lines that, do you have a plan for teachers to move between classrooms rather than children? So that, you know, to mitigate?
What's good, the way that's gonna, I have to say, K five, easier to keep youngsters in a cohort in school. Middle, high school becomes challenging as students talking about before about hallway. But the idea is to minimize the number of folks that come into a class that, that there's gonna have, uh, um, contact with each other as best we can. We'd have to work those into it. You know, um, folks in the outside, field trips, things of that nature, you're just gonna have to curtail all of that. Try to minimize the movement and those that come in contact with, with, with the students during the day. Well, K five easier, as I said, than six, seven, and eight, and even harder at the high school, based on the specialized content. It's gonna be a challenge.
And one other question was, are they gonna have the temperature checks done?
At this point, uh, we're gonna have to rely on the medical folks to, to advise us on that. Certainly, anything with symptoms and that we would do, but as they come through the doors and stuff, that's something we're, we're gonna have a conversation with the medical folks, their advice. Yeah, when you have thousands and thousands and thousands, depending on, you know, to put everybody through that could be somewhat daunting to us. But if we have suspect, the reason we believe that has to happen, obviously, we'll have to do something. And advise parents, not the students, because school day do have temperatures. Uh, so we're gonna work with the, with our health department and which is the best way around that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'm gonna move on to Solange, please.
Kevin, you may have to take, um, things going in and out on me.
No problem.
Okay, I'm having problems again. I don't know why.
Hi, um, I had a question about the classroom. How many, are you gonna reduce the people that are in the classroom or, like, um, separate desks between students?
If you could hear me, what we're gonna try to do is, we have, we're working with some specialists to go through classrooms and try to set them up, the state's saying, as long as we're wearing a mask, that, um, you know, that, that'll, that'll, that'll help us with distancing, but we'd like to give everybody as much distance as possible. So we probably will have to move furniture out of rooms where we can to get everybody more room so that there is some spacing between. So that's something that's a goal for us to work on. Yes, so we have to work on that, but.
I have another question about the gym. So since we have gym, right, and we're gonna do exercise, are you gonna take the masks or still wear them?
We're not sure about the gym classes and specials. We're working on that. That's, that's a good question. And, um, we don't have a good answer right now. We're gonna ask, um, children of education, teachers, the rest to help us with that. And they've got all the specials with art, music, uh, lesson, that may have to be, probably much different than what we used to. Okay, good question.
And, and I understand Amanda had a question and she had included it in a group chat, but honestly, there are so many now. I, I couldn't follow along. Can we just ask Amanda, do you wanna ask that question for everyone?
Amanda, go ahead. You're muted.
I don't know if you can hear me. Can you?
Yeah, Xavier.
I think so. I think so.
So my question was, should we, like, be able to go to recess? Because I know I go to the Pemberg and we do two raids combined, and that's a lot of people. And it's definitely more than fifty, so, and we're all talking the same requirement. So what do we really need to do about recess?
Yeah, Amanda, that, that, that's a great question. I, I'm sorry, Sally, still there?
Yeah, uh, we want, we want folks to go outside. So we're gonna figure out how to do recess in areas so that it's safe, but it won't be the same, but we wanna go outside when we can. So yes, we're gonna have to go to recess. It'll be a little bit different, but you can, you know, that, that's healthy for us to do.
And, and Amanda, you should also know, there were some, some points raised earlier that we actually may need to build in, uh, mask-like recess for, for our students and just kind of go outside and just take the mask off and just breathe and get a break. Um, and so the recess is an absolute yes, um, but we may also have to build in some recess for you guys just to get some air. Um, go outside where everyone's socially distanced and then come back to school. So we, we, we will.
I'm gonna just add on to his question. I think that's all fabulous except for that we live in the northeast and it rains a lot in the fall and it snows in early winter. So is there a plan in place for these things to happen within the building as well in a safe environment? I know space is an issue.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I could be honest with you. I have not heard any alternative plans to, for recess, um, outside of the building. Uh, you know, certainly there's opportunity to take advantage of bigger spaces like our cafeteria or, you know, depending on the school that you're in or a gym. Um, but no, we have not talked through, you know, alternatives to outside recess, uh, to date. Uh, but your point is a good one. We'll make sure we, we, we think through what that looks like.
Thank you. So Shreeja, please.
Um, hi, I'm gonna be a sophomore in DHS. I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So my first one will be about masks. I do understand that we're gonna have to wear them when we're in class and everything, but considering that the school day is like, oh, like, more than five hours, I don't know how students will be able to, like, have it on the whole time. Like, it would be pretty uncomfortable. So how are you going to handle that?
Okay, go ahead. Do you have another question?
Um, and also sharing materials in classes like gym and science. We're gonna have to share materials and sit in desks that probably other students have sat on. So, um, how's the sanitation, uh, gonna work there?
Right. Well, tho- tho- those are some great questions. Um, and so let, let me tackle, try to tackle the, the first part first. Um, can, can you tell me what you said at the beginning? Um, it was like a three-part question. Can you tell me what you asked at the beginning?
Um, it's about the masks, how.
All day?
Yeah.
And so, and so we, we recognize it's, it's going to be a challenge for, for our students and for our staff. Um, and so, which is, which is one of the reasons why earlier on the phone call, because we had a similar meeting with teachers this morning. Um, and they encouraged us to think through, um, you know, mask breaks, if you will, uh, for our students and staff. And finding opportunities for you guys to have built-in breaks throughout the day. Um, you know, literally where you guys can go outside, we're safe, everyone's socially distanced. Um, and we can take all of our mask and just kind of, and just kind of get a break from the mask itself. Um, I, I think we're gonna have to be intentional about making sure these things are built in as part of our schedule. Um, because we, we understand it's gonna be a significant adjustment. You know, all of us go out now and wear a mask and, you know, go to the supermarket or maybe even go to the mall now. Um, but it's very different, to your point, to, to, to have to wear one all day. Um, and so I, you know, our thoughts, particularly coming off of our meeting this morning, is that we need to think through and have some, with intentionality, make sure our kids have an opportunity to get a break from the mask. Uh, so we're, we're not exactly sure what that's gonna look like, but we're gonna have to come up with a plan because it's probably unreasonable to think everyone's gonna be, have it on for five consecutive hours. So it's a great question. And your other question, can you repeat that again?
Um, sharing materials in art and science and gym and sitting on desks that probably other students have sat on because we're gonna have to switch between classes.
And so ju- just so you know, I have a very nervous and anxious colleague on the line. She's a director of finance and facilities and operations and everything else. And, um, and, and, and we have talked through a plan where, so for example, I'll just start with, you know, subjects like art. Uh, but to your point, it also applies to subjects like science, uh, where you guys work in groups, we work in teams, you share materials in CTE classes, you know, we share materials in there. And the expectation is to, to, to the, to the extent possible, we will have individ, we'll, we'll, we'll need to order and make sure we have individual materials for students. Um, and so, you know, in our K five classes, elementary school classes, where, you know, it's sharing of art materials, sharing of, you know, science materials, group work, it's going to have to be separate and, and students contribute a little differently. Um, and, and, and so, you know, going up to the middle schools, if we have art classes with a shared materials or group work in our classrooms, it's also going to have to be, we're gonna have to provide students with their own materials. I, I mean, we've gone as far as to talk through, you know, individual packets of materials for our students um, so that, so that we limit or reduce, you know, the, the, uh, reduce sharing of materials in class. Um, we, we, we have not, and, and that's a very good point, you know, in, in every case where classes are changing, um, there might be a need, uh, you know, there's a need to, to, to possibly, you know, wipe down the spaces. Um, and, and honestly, I don't know if we've thought, we've, we've thought that part through. Um, and we, you know, certainly we had talked about internally, you know, at the end of the school day, every classroom will be disinfected. Um, and, and that's certainly something that will be able to happen. But I think i- if, in absence of being able to wipe down chairs, you know, in between periods, uh, we may not be able to get to every single seat, but we can encourage every single student to make sure their hands are clean um, in between classes, going in and out of classes. And so if we have disinfectant materials for you guys to disinfect your hands when leaving or entering a classroom, I think that will certainly help us mitigate the risk. Um, I, I know it's not a great, a great response or a great answer. Um, and, and that's why this forum, forum is so important to help us think through these things. I appreciate the question.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So our next person is Michael Snow.
Hi, uh, I'm a student at Danbury High School and I had a, I know we touched on the subject before in the call, but I just wanted to touch back on it, just to get a more solid answer.
Sure.
So will we be able to? Okay, well, will we be able to participate in extracurricular activities such as like clubs, sports, tutoring hours and more during the upcoming school year? I'm asking this because especially for high school students, this can be a very important part in making them well-rounded students and adding to their college application. And in the, and if the pandemic can become a problem and making this happen, we can very well meet in different locations to make it easier or even have the students disinfect, disinfect, dis- sorry, disinfect the locations that they meet in. If, uh, if the problem is that janitors won't have time to clean up that, those spaces after they meet.
Yeah, Mi- Michael, great question, great point, um, about how important it is to your portfolio. Um, I, I, I think, and, and because we've, we've received some initial guidance about extracurricular activities, not necessarily clubs in, in, in particular, but I, I think, Michael, as long as we can demonstrate that we can, uh, congregate safely, um, and, and certainly if we can demonstrate we can congregate safely in a classroom, I would like to think we can congregate safely in a club, right? Where typically we may not have as many, as many students in a club as, as our typical classroom. So, uh, my answer would be yes, uh, without, without seeing that explicitly in the plan. Um, but again, if we're back to school fully, um, you know, we're, we're gonna be back to school fully. Um, if we're back to school with conditions, then we'll certainly need to spell those conditions out, you know, beyond wearing a mask. Uh, but I anticipate if we're back to school a hundred percent capacity in the fall, these extracurricular activities that you're talking about, uh, will, will, will be in place.
I do have one more question. Should I wait to? I do have one more question. Should I wait to ask that?
No, please, go ahead.
So if we were to implement a hybrid education system, I would, I'd like to share my opinion on not having the school days be cut short. And if the hybrid system were to be in place, that I, as a student, would prefer that some students would go in for a full day and other students would go in on separate days for also a full day rather than some students going in for the morning, some going in for the afternoon. Because I could see how this can waste time with all the buses and the disinfections that are disinfecting the locations the students have been. This can also make getting to extracurriculars more difficult and for the students that aren't at the school at the time and can even cut the education short. We're having to leave from the learning and look, having to leave the school to go to a different location to learn can be proven as difficult.
Yeah, so so these are these are great questions and points that you're raising. Honestly, and and I'm learning something new. Every town hall forum that we're in, I'm learning something new every time. And 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 not to say, I mean, as a as an educator and former principal, it's not as if I haven't experienced these things. But it's it's reminding me of how important these things are, Michael, so I I appreciate you raising these these issues. We will, because, you know, with with so many things in play and 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 worrying about and thinking through how we're gonna make sure the buildings are safe, we also need to make sure we have school, right? And that your school that your school experience is is honored and and is as 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 consistent with what how we know schooling and and we we have to, we have to make sure that happens. And so you have brought up the point about, hey, if they're gonna, if there are options out there, these are options that I would like, and these are the reasons why. When there will be a need for us to push out another survey to everyone. And when we do push out a survey, we will likely have a survey that's gonna articulate the different options that are available if be because the the governor has access to one at at this low, low level of instances in the community to go back to school at a hundred percent. However, if we ever, if there's ever a place where we are designated as a community at moderate instances of COVID-19 in a community, then we would enter school at a reduced, at a reduced, at a reduced, at reduced levels. And it it's important for the community to have some feedback to help inform this decision. And so although right now we have a thought exchange out there that it's eliciting feedback on what you feel like our top priority should be, but we will explicitly have some type of survey. Once we know exactly what our plan is, folks will know exactly what's what's available, what's in front of us, and then they can make some choices. And one of those choices definitely needs to be, if we're gonna have a reduced model, what are the models and what are the options? And it will make sure that that's that's in there in some way, so you guys can give your feedback. So, Michael, I appreciate you asking the questions the way you have.
So we'll go to Christopher Borges, next. Chris? Chris, Chris, go closer to your mic. Try going closer to your mic. That's better. Stay close to the mic. Yeah.
So I have a question regarding school budget, how do the COVID-19? You're gonna have to, and then obviously buy and order and more. For all the comments, do just.
Okay, Chris, we're losing you. Can you put your message in the chat box? We're not able to totally understand you, but I think your question is very concerning to everyone, so please put it in the chat box. Okay?
So Anne, and there was also a question about orientation, it looks.
Yes.
Eric had asked and and maybe Serena as well, incoming, actually, I'm not sure if Eric asked this question, but Serena had asked.
People that asked about freshman orientation.
Okay, and and, you know, we 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 have freshman orientation in place for a reason because we recognize how important that transition is. So we will, we will make sure we work with the principal to figure out what the alternative is going to be. You know, some of the some of some of the things that I've heard so far is not necessarily at Danbury High School, but I know Ace was talking about perhaps some type of virtual orientation with, you know, the principal will be walking around the school and provide an orientation for students that way if we can't get students in in person for the orientation. So I will make sure, you know, when we connect with Dan, that we're helping Dan in in the high school through this because we, again, we understand how important that transition is. And not, you know, for our private school students coming into public school and then just for our eighth grade students moving up to the ninth grade, it's it's important to make sure that they feel comfortable, they feel safe going into this new environment. So Anne, we we have a, we have students, there are like two students on one video. Maybe we can get like extra credit if we ask them, see if they have any questions for us.
Absolutely. So we still, we still have three people in the chat box or in.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so if we can go to Jennifer Grant.
I was wondering also about the lockdown drills and the fire drills because I know that those are common, that we have them like just to make sure everything's working and that everybody knows what to do and what's going on. But with lockdown drills, we all have to sit in the same area, so I was wondering how that was gonna work and how it would work to get students outside for fire drills.
Yeah, Jennifer, that's a great question. So that that question was actually talked about with our director of security recently. And 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 we are reaching out to the powers that be to see if those are going, if those expectations are gonna be relaxed at all in the fall. You know, so as of right now, the plan would be that we would still need to administer those drills. But we will be asking the question, will those drills be, will the expectations be relaxed in the fall? Kind of given, you know, given the pet return from the pandemic. That that is a great question. That is a great question.
Good. I'll move on to Lauren, our cherry. But I'd like Kevin, Mr. Wallston, if you could read Christopher Borges' comment in the chat box and and reply to that. Verbally, I think that's a good question for everyone. So Lauren, can we hear from you?
Yes, I'm curious because my daughter is going to 11th grade at DHS and she has a hearing problem. So she reads lips. I have not gotten her an IEP. So I'm a little concerned about how she's gonna function in a classroom when she can't see the teacher's lips.
Hi, hi, Lauren. Please, 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 if you need help, you can email me after this call is over or you can just, you know, just, we can stay on the line, we can exchange information. But I think it's gonna be important for your principal and teachers to be aware of this modification that's gonna be needed for your child. Because for us, it could be a simple adjustment for the teacher. And we we could just be asking that teacher to wear a mask, where their where their face is exposed so that so 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 that this is a non-issue for your daughter. So, you know, it's it's important that your 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 principal is aware so they can make sure the modification is is met and make sure your teachers are aware. And with that, with that slight adjustment, this should be a non-issue. As a district, we've already talked about ordering special masks for those for those staff members and and making sure they're available. In fact, we just had a call this morning talking about the populations that might require this, whether it's our ELL community, whether it's our special needs community or even students, you know, requiring a 504. And even if they're not identified, if it's brought to our attention, we will make the adjustment.
Okay, so should I, should I try to get her an IEP for this? We'd never really needed it. She's a pretty decent student, but I don't know if I need the writing, a piece of paper in writing saying she has this problem or if we can just work without it.
Yeah, that that's a great question. I think it's, I think it's best that you have the conversation with your principal and and your, right? And then, you know, perhaps guidance counselor, et cetera. And they'll make the determination locally because not knowing your specific case. In most cases, you should not need an IEP for this, but again, I, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn here. You know, there are cases where this can be handled with a 504 and the 504 is just, you know, making sure we're all on the same page about the support that your 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 daughter needs. But you might not need a 504, you know, it might just be an adjustment that we can make. Or we might need a temporary 504, right? Because right after this, you know, the these the these rules are relaxed, we won't have to worry about the mask again and your daughter can continue to move on and those adjustments might not be necessary.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Good question. So I'm gonna go to Hamaja Tralala, a sixth grader.
So since school is indoors, how is ventilation going to work in winter when heaters are running?
Yeah, that's a good, great question. So, you know, we we've been encouraged to leave doors open. We've been encouraged to 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 leave windows open. We've been encouraged to socially distance to the best extent possible. And 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 right now, that with within our means anyway, that's our best way to try to 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 help address the ventilation concerns. So I I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Mr. Wallston, would you like to answer Christopher's question or give some feedback about the budget?
Sure. Oh, yes, the budget one. So so Christopher, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna start responding to your question, but then I'm gonna ask my colleague, who's the true expert here, to to also give some feedback. So i- if you don't mind, I'm gonna read the question for the group because I'm I'm sure there are a lot of people on this call who are wondering, students and parents alike. So regarding the school budget due to COVID, we we know we have, you know, decreasing budget. We don't have as much money as we've had, you know, in typical years. And although this might be true, I know there might be a need to buy more supplies and increase sanitation and maybe even more buses. So how are we gonna pay for these things if indeed our budget is decreasing and we have less money? Where's the money coming from to pay for this stuff? And Courtney, I can take the easy one and just hand it off to you, but maybe you should just take the easy one and I'll just get out the way on this one.
Thank you, Kevin. I I don't know if any of them are easy. It's really, really great to see all of you and to hear your feedback. And I'm I'm so, so glad that we're getting the opportunity to speak with you. Yes, you're right, Chris. It is a very challenged budget that we have, given that, you know, the city isn't collecting the revenues that it would normally have collected. And that said, there there are additional federal funding that's been made available to Danbury. And there might be more. We're we're, you know, scanning the environment for every single possible resource we can, we can find. I know we have Senator Kushner here on the line, so I'd encourage folks to reach out to their legislature and encourage, you know, challenged districts that like Danbury to be treated uniquely like they are. We have an incredibly vibrant, you know, urban population, which also means that we're pretty crowded and so our needs are great. We did get funding about $2 million from the CARES Act. It's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund to take care of some of the sanitizing things that we'll need. But, you know, a- as you can, as you know, as a student that's in the school, Chris, can I ask if you're, if you're here, are you high school? Are you in the middle school? I think you chatted possibly because it's hard to.
Yeah, I I can't see what grade level Chris is at.
Yeah, so, but, you know, what what, all the challenges that Kevin's talking about working through, we've been, we've been modeling out different scenarios and the costs. So the resources are gonna be part of the decision. At the foremost is the safety of of you, the students, the teachers, the faculty and all the administrators. So within the resources we have, we're gonna do everything possible. And so, you know, that means sanitizing the classrooms, that means distancing, you know, getting decals where we need to have decals to remind people where to stand, you know, like Dr. Sal mentioned. You know, if masks masks are mandatory, having available additional masks if students aren't able to to provide their own. Yeah, it's very expensive. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big challenge.
Thank you. And that's Courtney LaVoria. She is our Director of Business and oversees our budget and has done a wonderful job on our finances this year, being new to the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you. Okay.
If we can go to Ravi.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Ravi. I have two kids. One is going to Westside, seventh grade, and one younger one is Shelter Rock Elementary, third grade. So I was curious about two things. One is the bus, are we going to have any capacity restrictions in the bus? And then the second question is, are the kids going to be checked for temperature checks or health checks as a precautionary measure every day? Or how are we dealing with that kind of, you know, health checks?
So I will start with the bus restrictions. There there. We we have been guided to socially distance where to the greatest extent possible, where appropriate. But at the same time, we've also been asked to open up schools at a hundred percent capacity or up to a hundred percent capacity. And so my my short answer is no restrictions. The restrictions would be students wearing masks. And 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 that will be the the key restriction when when getting on buses. And and Ravi, I'm not sure if you were on the call earlier, but one of ours, one of our students had raised a question and, you know, and and reminded us, quite frankly, that we need to learn quickly from the, from our parents and and our students who is going to take advantage of the school buses and who is going to select to drive in to school every day and be picked up from school every day. And that will help with the district's planning effort, planning efforts to to figure out how much we can truly social distance on the buses. But but without that survey information, we're really not gonna be able to plan for it. I I I think, and and going back to Christopher's question about, hey, we know, we know the budget is tight and Courtney just 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 talked about where there is additional funding coming in. But that but that funding has already been spoken for in additional buses, quite frankly, has not been part of the budget. And 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 additional buses, additional runs would mean we would probably spend all of our monies down without even getting to all the other necessary things to help with schooling. And so we're we're hoping that serving our community will help mitigate the risk, learning from our families who will be driving to school, who will be taking the bus and then kind of having kind of a, you know, kind of a, an attendance role on the bus. And hopefully we'll be able to reduce the numbers on the bus. We don't necessarily want to encourage families because we don't want to be a burden on the families. But if they are going to drive their kids to school and they'll remain committed to that, that would help us tremendously. And then your your other question about, we, at this time, we are not, we have not been given the guidance to administer temperature checks for our students when they enter the building. However, there will be strong recommendations and guidance for families and staff to self-report. And and that's something we'll be making available for everyone.
Thank you, Kevin. I I totally understand that we are all trying to find, you know, solutions for the problems which we haven't come across any time in our lives. I do really appreciate all that we're going, I mean, you guys are taking care and seeing for to solve. But I want to suggest two things. One is our kids, like especially the elementary's kids are very too young for them to have masks wore all the time, you know? And it comes with discipline, but at the same time, a lot of monitoring and things like that. The second thing is the profiling of the students, you know, in case, I don't know how to put this, but it will help if someone is sick at home or anything like that. How do we know? How do we get that kind of, you know, I don't have answers, but at the same time, I don't expect answers. We have to look something around those scenarios.
Right. Yeah, I I and I'm glad you asked that last question in particular because as as part of our self-reporting, and and no different from the beginning of this pandemic, it will be important for us to to ask families, to ask students to self-report, you know, have you, are you experiencing any of these symptoms? Or have you been in contact with someone who's had had COVID-19? And and then, you know, having mechanisms in place for folks to self-report so that, you know, we can help mitigate the risk in our schools. And and the important thing, and 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 honestly, we're gonna need everyone's. Um, and and the important thing, and 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 honestly, we're we're going to need everyone's help, help and cooperation on this. You know, whether that's, you know, establishing expectations of students, staff and families. Um, because we're really going to need everyone to we're we're really going to need everyone um to 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 all be part of the solution, Robbie, in in cases like this, um in order to keep our schools and our community safe.
Thank you. Thanks, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you, Robbie.
So we have three more people, so I'm going to do Scott and then Griffin and Alberta. So Scott G, you would like to give your feedback?
Um, yeah, it kind of goes off of actually what we were just talking about. Um, but it has to do with like with the attendance policy. Uh, you know, I think I saw that in the chat a little bit ago. Um, you know, I'm not going to lie, kind of like the previous years, it's almost like you were encouraged to come to school if you were sick, just with having so few absences. Um, plus, you know, also just the work that you miss in general. Um, so, you know, as much as, you know, you can say just stay home is something, is there going to be a change with that? Because otherwise, you know, people are going to be very encouraged to come to school or to do something like where you're not going to miss because there's so many ramifications for doing so.
Yes, so Scott, so what number one, Scott, you have a great voice. Um, you might have a future in radio one day. Uh, and and secondly, uh, I I don't have a great answer for you. Um, I I can I I can share with you um that the state guidance, they did recommend strongly that we have an attendance policy in place. Um, but you you and I also know, and and most folks on this call, um, a high school attendance policy um is 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 strict. It it does not have much flex, a lot of flexibility. And 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 I think and and I think what I'm hearing from you, you know, one, the attendance policy encourages our students to be in school every day. And 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 in some cases, it encourages it be in school even when you're not feeling well. Um, and so I and 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 I I can't tell you how much I appreciate you raising this point um because we will have to develop some type of attendance policy, whether that's, you know, whether that's, you know, full-time in school or even in a hybrid model uh with this partial school or partial distance learning, or even in a distance learning format. We, you know, we need to come up with some type of attendance policy. But if there's any combination where students might be in school, by all means, we want to discourage students from coming in if they're going to compromise their own safety and the safety of others. Um, and it has to be flexibility in being mindful of their own grades uh because we we don't want you to compromise your your own grades when, you know, choosing choosing the safety of others. Um, so, Chris, we we will definitely make a note of that. Um, and and make sure and make sure that's reflected in our attendance policy, that flexibility is reflected in our attendance policy. So thanks, Scott, for that question.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Griffin.
Yeah, to to second that, the current policy allows you to miss five core classes. And with the incubation period of COVID being two weeks, people going on vacation and showing any symptoms, that just instantly gives them a 65. So I appreciate that you don't know what it looks like right now, and we may not for a while. But um I have a question about what, oh, if there's any current discussion about a hybrid distance learning plan. Is it, are we thinking about staggering it all and having some people go on some days and some people go on other days?
Yeah, great, Griffin, that's a great question. So um, one, you should know, everyone should know, we we're actually required to have um some type of hybrid model available and and proposed to the state. Um, and so that requirement alone um suggests that we have to be think, beginning to think through this. Um, so so that's one. And so, but we're also, and and given some of the concerns and challenges that we talked about when we first got on this call, um, where one of the students was talking about her experience walking the halls of Danbury High School, and she didn't understand how she could possibly be socially distanced, given how crowded our hallways are. And and frankly, our middle schools, um, you know, our middle school students have a similar experience at their buildings because they're all so overcrowded. Um, we we are um, we'll be looking to see if there are any options to going back to school 100% um and 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 see if any and and see if there are, if there's any flexibility in 100% return to school. Um, if they're not, then again, we'll have to do the best we can to make sure everyone is safe. Um, but if there are, um, then we will be exploring all of those all of those options, Griffin, including the ones, you know, some of the ones that you just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Great. Alberta, I'd like to hear from you.
Okay, so we were just talking about my question. So I had the same question as Griffin. So I was, I'm just gonna like explain it in a different way. So like, are you guys considering going back to school like in an eighth period in one day? And like having one wave of student coming the morning and then one wave coming in the afternoon? Or like, are you planning on going like one wave of students in Monday and the other wave on Tuesday? So what is your plan on that?
Yeah, yeah. So um, that was Alberta who just talked, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so Alberta, I'm not trying to be funny when I when I say this. Um, one, we don't know. And two, we need your help to help inform that decision. Um, and so one of um, one, one of our students earlier had asked a similar question, and I think it's going to be important for us to think through a couple of options. And I think you just um mentioned a a few good ones. Um, but propose a couple of different options for our community. Um, you know, for 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 you and your other students and parents to give some feedback on so that we can land on um, land on some options that that makes the most sense for our community.
Okay, great. And I just wanted to thank all of you teachers and supervisors and everything. You're really doing a great job, like trying to help us learn in our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alberta.
Thank you. Kira McCarthy.
Hi, so I was wondering if it was a possibility to like, so maybe like it'd be a little different depending on the amount of students who are allowed in the building. But so split like the population of the school in half and have half of the students attend on Monday and Tuesday, and then either have Wednesday off or have virtual school on Wednesday and like deep clean the building and then have the second set of students in on Thursday and Friday.
Courtney, did you just have a conversation with Kiara, like?
You read, you read our thoughts.
Yeah. Um, so Kiara, we were just talking about that very plan a couple of hours ago, like in between meetings. Um, so I I really do think it's going to be important for us to explicitly um detail, provide some options for you, other students, um, you know, moms, dads, families for us to consider. Uh, because we want to make sure that we're landing on something, again, that makes the most sense for our community. Um, because we know we have folks who who have to go to work. We know, also know, we have, you know, families with with younger children that have to go to work. Um, but at the same time, we also need to meet the needs of, you know, our older students and, you know, um, Griffin raised the point, talk about, hey, I'm going into my senior year and extracurricular activities, and my portfolio is really important to me. And, you know, we have to be mindful of all of those things uh when we when we finally land on a model uh for our for Danbury. Um, and so that's why it's really going to be so important for us to cert, you know, get this feedback in this survey. Uh, but that that was a great question, and and thank you for raising.
Um, okay. And also, so for like when we were normally in school to be able
But oh, my goodness, that was like forever ago.
Yeah. Um, to be able to attend like your team sport or any extracurricular activity, you would have to be in school. So say it was a day, like if we had a hybrid program, and if it was a day when you like had distance learning from home, like if you checked in as present, would you still be allowed to go to your sports if like more allowed to have sports?
Absolutely, Kiara. Um, the 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 challenge for us is, um, and and this this may have been your next question, is for our students and families that may need transportation, uh because we don't have an answer to that right now. Um, and so if if we were, and 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 these are some of the implications of being in any kind of hybrid model. Um, if if we're going to continue with, you know, full, full extracurricular activities and, you know, hypothetically, we have students, you know, going back to some of the models that Griffin was proposing. We have students in for certain days of the week. You know, that may not necessarily neatly align with extracurricular activities. And so the expectation is we would still have the extracurricular activities, but the students, if they're not in school that day or if they left or half a day early, um, you know, getting them back could be a challenge if we're going to provide that transportation. Um, so we, it's it's probably help we're going to need from the community on this. And again, it's another, it's it's another thing that we have to consider when 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 landing on a hybrid model of any kind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kiara.
Kara, so we have two in the chat box. I'm going to uh combine because they're very similar. So the first one is if you go on vacation out of state, what does quarantine look like before you can go back to school? And the second part of that from another person is um, what would happen if someone is sick at home and you don't know that you're coming down with it or that you're a super spreader? How would that be dealt within the school buildings?
Yeah. And can we take the the last one first?
Sure.
Um, and and I think it's going to be important for us um to have some kind of self-reporting protocol uh for our community. Um, you know, I was I was on a call earlier this morning with teachers and and they had asked, they said, hey, you know, Kevin, we 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 need to know what the expect, our expectations are, the expectations of our our families, expectations of our students. Um, and and not, and when I say expectations, I mean, what is the expectation of my wearing a mask all day? What's the expectation around, you know, providing masks for a student? And so, you know, no different here, we need to talk about, you know, kind of general expectations uh for all of us. Um, and and I'm sorry, that, what was that, the second, the first and second question?
So the second one was if you go on vacation out of state.
Thank you.
Would be quarantine.
Yeah.
And for, are we doing contact tracing?
Okay. And so it's it's important for us as part of that self-reporting um that that we bring this to to someone's attention, right? And that's why, again, that's why it's so important for us to have the protocols in place um to of self-reporting. Um, and so it's going to be important that, you know, Courtney and I, you know, she just went to a country that was on high alert, and she's just coming back into the country, and I just came off of a cruise. Um, I I need to report that to HR. Um, Courtney needs to report her trip to HR. And so in our schools, um, there will, it will be necessary for our families and our students to report, you know, perhaps to the school nurse or to their to their administrator. And then we will have kind of further guidance from there. Um, and so I'm I'm glad you guys are raising these questions because it's going to be necessary for us to make sure it's incorporated in the plan. Um, and frankly, I don't even think there was a space in there for it right now from the guidance from the state, but we're going to have to make sure we have something available. Um, and then second part, Anne, I don't, I don't know, maybe I had, didn't have my second cup of coffee. The first part of that question was
I I think you hit it. You know, what if there was someone um at home that had it?
Got it.
Along with that um self-reporting? And will be, will the district be using contact tracing?
Okay. And and contact tracing is is something the district will definitely be doing. Um, there's an expectation in our, we will be working with the local health department, and our school nurses have all been trained um on 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 contact tracing. In fact, um, every nurse, my understanding is, was contact tracing last year um in 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 collaboration with the local health department. Um, and so moving forward in the fall, the expectation is we'll be continuing with that effort.
Great. All right. So that brings us to the end of questions, which I think have been wonderful. I certainly have a few asterisks more than I had this morning from our other first uh earlier meetings. And so um, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. I don't see that Dr. Sal is still on here. Um, but Courtney or Cara Casmero, who is our uh Director of Instruction and Curriculum, and Kevin, any last comments? And we'll close out for today.
Sure, thank you, Anne. So so one, I I want to thank everyone for making themselves available uh for this town hall meeting this afternoon. Uh, we were unsure what kind of presence we would have um and and happy to see uh that we had up to 60 plus people earlier this at in earlier in this call. So it was, it was really great to see so many faces and and so so many folks involved. Um, as you know, um, we are taking this very seriously. I I I hope you, I hope part of your takeaway is the district is taking this seriously. Um, we we know uh that we will not have a perfect plan. And whatever plan that's presented to the public, um, we also know everyone's not going to be happy. And it's not going to reach and meet everyone's needs. Um, however, any plan that we put together, um, the spirit of that plan will be to ensure everyone's safety in our schools. Um, and 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 first and foremost, that's going to be our students, that's going to be our staff, and that's going to be our greater community because we understand and recognize the implications it has on the Danbury community. Um, to to help inform the plan, however, we need feedback from you. And if there was, i- if it was, if it was, i- if it wasn't obvious earlier, it was certainly obvious in this call, at least for me, um, that we need feedback from students and families to help determine what those options are. Um, you know, as mentioned earlier, um, the district is required to have landed on a hybrid model in the event of increased cases in the city. Um, and so, and then if there's any flexibility on a, you know, original back-to-school model, um, we're also going to need feedback from you. So you will hear from us again soon. Uh, by July 24th, we have to have an official plan uh submitted to the state. Uh, we're hoping to have something publicly presented um a couple of days prior to that. I believe the superintendent is going to be requesting that we have a board meeting. And so this means in the next two, two and a half weeks, um, we will have probably a couple of more surveys uh shared with the school community to get their last minute feedback to further um to 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 further update the plan uh before it's shared, you know, finally with the public. Um, so I can't thank you enough uh for your participation today. I can't thank the students enough. Um, you know, for a- anytime we have these meetings, but anytime the students are involved, we get a different level of participation in questions and answers. And so I I can't thank you enough. And Anne, thank you for putting this together for us this afternoon. Appreciate it.
Courtney, any comments?
No, I'm just, I'm just really looking forward to a um return to school and knowing what capacity that's going to be and seeing everyone again in the fall. So between now and then, I'm sure there'll be more opportunity for us to get feedback from you all and just know that we're working really, really hard to ensure that you're all safe. And I wanted to thank Kevin for his leadership and Dr. Sal, everyone on the call today for taking the time to be here with us. So thank you very much. I hope you have a really wonderful summer from now till when we talk again.
Yeah, and and Anne, I just want to say thank you to to Julie for joining us, Amy, Rachel, Gladys, Kate. Um, I believe I also saw Kathy's name in here. Um, I know you guys have been in and out of meetings all day with us. Maybe can't thank you enough for your support and this effort.
Thank you for your leadership and everyone that's helping make this happen. So
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you all. Have a good rest of the afternoon.
Bye.
Bye.